Good evening, everyone. I'm going to show my age a little bit here, but as Neil Diamond used to say before his concerts, "Man, it's really jammed in here." Thank you all for coming. I would like to call to order the Centerville Board of Education meeting for Monday, August 30th, 2021. Call and roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Here.
Dr. Rohr.
Here.
Megan Sparks.
Here.
Mr. Schreier.
Here. Item number three, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four on the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agendas presented, please?
A minute.
Second.
Call and roll, Ms. Omer.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Item number five is the introduction of new administrators. Dr. Henderson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Schreier. We have three new administrators that we're happy to present to the Board of Education. Obviously, they've already started their responsibilities and have been on board for several weeks now and are doing a great job. So we wanted to do this officially to let you be able to face with the name and then also get them on camera for our community as well. So we're going to have our three central office administrators making introductions tonight. It will start off first with our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Dan Tarpe. He will be followed by our Director of Student Services, Mrs. Annie Europe, and then our Director of Business Operations, Mr. John Weston. So I'm going to turn it over to Dan, and he's going to start us off.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson, and good evening. This evening, it's my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Katie Thornton to you. Katie, could you come up, please? Katie is the new Principal of Stingley Elementary. Katie's in her 15th year working for the Centerville City Schools. She's a proud grad with both Miami University and the University of Dayton. Katie was initially hired in 2006 as a kindergarten teacher at then Centerville Kindergarten Village. And from 2000, she then moved to PBS where from 2007 to 2020, she taught special education and first grade. In the spring of 2020, Katie was selected as the district's elementary special education coordinator. And so over the years, Katie has endured several administrative interview processes. So I have termed her middle name as persistent because she has stayed with it. She's endured multiple processes, and they're not easy ones here in Centerville. And each one of those initial ones were followed by one of my fatherly pep talks for her. But seriously, seeing how you're in there, I'm very proud of Katie's professional persistence. Her determination in the district is very, very fortunate to have her serving in the capacity as principal at Stingley Elementary School. So very high-performing member of our Centerville team. And so it's a great pleasure to introduce Katie to you and let her make a few remarks. Katie.
Well, thanks, everyone. Thank you to the Board of Education. It's an incredible honor to be continuing to serve the district, especially as the Principal of Stingley Elementary. The staff and students are incredible, so I just am warm and welcoming and really have a great place that loves kids and is very open at their building. And I have wonderful support of the family there, and it's been a great experience to start the year there and look forward to a great year ahead of us. So thank you very much.
It is my pleasure to introduce Josh Fort. He is our new elementary special education coordinator. Josh will be supporting both our PV buildings for grades K and 1, Pine, Driscoll, Stingley, and Weller Elementary. Josh was an intervention specialist here in the district. He has been with us since about 2016, spending most of his time at Weller Elementary. He moved over to PBN for the 2021 school year and now is joining my team at Central Office. Josh was also the summer camp director for Washington Township for three years, so he's had some experience out in the community. And prior to coming to Centerville, he was a general education teacher and then a teacher of general education and special education also. So that has brought great experience with him, and he's done an excellent job at joining our team. Welcome, Phil.
Thank you very much, Fort. I really appreciate it. It's an honor to continue my career in Centerville and continue my career in special education and starting my career in leadership here in a city that I love to live in, I'm growing a family in, and continue to work in. So thank you for that opportunity.
It's a great honor to introduce Doug Zimmer as our Assistant Transportation Supervisor of the District. Doug, a University of Dayton graduate, comes from us from City City Schools. He has some administrative experience as a high school principal and the assistant principal. He started his career as a high school English teacher, also worked nine years as a football coach, as a head football coach at Greveville and wealthy Tennessee schools. It's just been an honor to get Doug here on our staff. I think with his experience, he's just going to bring a lot of leadership to our transportation department. He's worked really hard over the last few weeks just to try to memorize bus rats and bus stops. So I know it's been overwhelming for him. He's got a lot to learn, but we're excited to have him here this year. So please welcome Doug Zimmer.
Thank you, John, and thank you to the Board of Education and the City City Schools, Centerville City Schools, of course. But I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Obviously, I've learned a lot working with the transportation team, a lot of responsibilities, a lot of students, a lot going on, and still trying to figure some things out there and get the kinks out. But we're rolling and we're doing the best we can. So it's an honor to be a part of such a great team. I look forward to being a part of Centerville, so thank you very much. We'd love to all be this year.
Thank you. Welcome to, welcome to everybody. It's great to have you on board. Thank you. Item number six on the agenda, the hearing in the public. Dr. Henderson mentioned the parameters. What I would like for people to consider in line would be, if you could maybe cut your talk down, each person maybe just a little bit, that might allow some other people behind you to speak. That's certainly your choice, but I would ask you if you would consider doing that for me, please. If you want to speak, those of you in line, please state your name and address. Limit your comments to three minutes, but if you can, condense a little bit so we can hear as many people as possible. Thanks. Go ahead.
Do you want to state my physical address?
Yes, please.
I'm Heather Howell. I'm a resident at Centerville, Washington Township. I live at 533 Crowley Run, Number 208 in Centerville, 4548. I have been in the district for 15 years. I have been a huge advocate, been very involved in athletic programs. I was wrestling business president for two years. I was vice president for a year. I was very, very immersed in the program. And truly have loved my time in this district up until most recently. I think lots of lines are being crossed. I ran into a teacher over the weekend and I asked her what she thought on the mask policy. And she and I have known each other on a personal level, and also I knew her through education. And she said, and she's teaching very young children, that it's challenging, to say the least. She cannot make that personal connection with these kids. She cannot show them, and she's smiling, that she doesn't have the ability to show them. If she had these thoughts, she would take them out for a moment just to show a smile. That's sad. And it's like, it really kind of drove, dragged it straight to the heart for me. In addition to the fact that students that maybe are more introvert, they're not speaking to other students because they're masked. They don't have the ability, again, to show expressions, just normal human interaction. The numbers are not showing us that we have to mask or vaccinate our children for that matter, and it should be a choice. That's what I'm here for. Now, I'm here to speak today. I have kept quiet for many years on my philosophy, and I truly believe the power that made a body feel body. There is a virus always in front of us, and you may laugh. That is right in my heart. Please, please, it is funny, okay? Psychological effects for students that we don't even know are occurring every single day if they're masked. We just want the choice to mask our children or to not mask our children. That is all I'm asking today. I'm very appreciative that I have the opportunity to speak, and I really, really want my children to stay in the district, but I'm being forced to look at other members, and that is the truth. And I will have to do so if this continues. I would like a choice for our family. That is all I ask. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Angel Corey. My address is 33 Park Drive. I'm a minister in good standing in the state of Ohio, as well as founder of Ohio Says No. Ohio has acknowledged, I'm sorry, acknowledged the parents' rights, I'm old, I bet these letters aren't. Over the school system, health care, choice, and discretion. As outlined in ORC 3313.671 B4, which I'm sure you're all aware of, the ability for a parent to opt out or say no exists in Ohio law. This includes a plethora of reasons, such as immunity, which many of our children are already tested and have. And this is outlined in B1 through 3 of that same ORC. And as well, with a written statement, and I quote, "of the pupil's parent or guardian in which the parent or guardian declines to have the pupil immunized for reasons of conscience, including religious convictions, is not required to be immunized. Notice, there is no requirement for any minister to sign off, nor is leeway given for you to deny it. You may argue a mask is not vaccination. However, your specific use of it as a medical device to prevent any disease makes it fall squarely under the same ORC, thus a protection of the people against you. Title VII of the Civil Rights Act prohibits discrimination, including that of religion, encompasses all aspects of religious observance and practice, as well as belief. Per the ADA Title I, you are required to accommodate sincerely held religious beliefs. This definition is broad, and texts beliefs and practices with which you may not be unfamiliar with or disagree with. Nothing gives you, this broad, this board, not broad, this board superintendent the right to out of hand deny any religious exemption, especially with your mass form, which many of these parents have reached out to me about, denial letter, claiming your attorney reviewed and rejected. Is it this board and superintendent's goal and aspiration to usurp or dismiss individual rights or freedoms? Please, this attorney so often mentioned and is often sent out to denial, was his bachelor's degree or master's in theology? If so, please tell me which faith, Catholic, Baptist, Methodist, Islam, Hindi, which does he use to validate or violate these parents' rights to parent their children and their freedom of religion? Is this what this board and superintendent stand for? If so, know this, this board will be replaced and the superintendent will be unemployed. Thank you so much. Speaker, come in.
Good afternoon or evening. My name is Curtis Edworth, 685 Salwood Avenue. I'm just a parent. I have been in Centerville City Schools for many years, and I really, I came in here wanting to change your mind, but I'm pretty sure I can't change your mind. I think I was hesitant to release the mask mandate last time, and I think it's very easy to put it back in. So I just have to figure out why. I mean, I can't tell you what's in your head, but I can say what it's not, okay? It is not preventing the virus, because all the data on cloth masks worn all day by kids says it's as ineffective as it could possibly be. It's not yet, it's not to prevent us, okay? Because all the data on kids under 18 says that they're at a bigger risk from dying in car accident, but we don't try and stop that. So I'm only left to discern that your reasons must be others. And whatever they are, I thought you guys were here to work for us and then to deploy a superintendent to do this. Last meeting, you said that the superintendent, you're going to do whatever the superintendent said. I don't know whose responsibility it is, okay? But you guys are kind of here to own it for us. You know, it's our fault. I look in the mirror and I say, I have not taken place over the past decade, because I had a lot of faith that you guys were just going to, you know, just like us, do the things that made sense. You know, I guess it's not until a crisis that you find out. Maybe it's not the way you think, maybe it's not the way you want it, maybe I'm optimistic, maybe I'm Pollyanna, I don't know. But guys, this is ridiculous. Come on, this is Centerville High, all right? We don't have to prove anything. Kids need to see each other's faces. That means a lot. Feedback means a lot, especially for kids. And if you really want to educate them, you want to give them every advantage. You don't want to hold back a couple, you don't want to say, well, they can just try harder. And I always feel uncomfortable when you have a lot of people stand around saying, "Look, we just have to take away their rights. It's for the good of all of us." That's never ended well in the past, and I may be particularly sensitive to it. Make sure we end up doing the right thing by the kids. That's the only thing that really matters. I didn't think you guys talked about it. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Jenna Johnson. I'm a student at Centerville High School. I struggle with sensory issues from day to day, and I have not been doing all of these masks. I feel like I'm being suffocated and, you know, feel pretty claustrophobic, and it's just about five days will take on my face throughout the day. And you've been laughing more than I've heard that. I go through problems today, and it's not funny to laugh like that, okay? I heard you laughing. Now shut the hell up. I need to try to tell you that I am struggling and I need your help. I can't change this on my own as a student, and I know many other students that have this problem. So I've gone to school board, worked with the kids with various levels of special needs and mental illness, and we need your help. You should know that we can't change this on our own, and we need your help. And I am struggling, and I had to go to remote because I couldn't handle it. I would text my mom every day, and I would be like, "Mom, I have a serious migraine because I can't freaking breathe, and it's just too much." I need you to look at all these kids and understand that what you're doing is not helping any of us at all. And all these kids under the age of 18, if I got COVID, I may feel bad, and I would stay home. I wouldn't go out and spread it to other people. I'm not that stupid. I would, I just need your help, okay? I want to be able to breathe. I want to see my friends' faces. I want to go into school and not have a headache by the end of the day and just go home and absolutely pass out from exhaustion. It's just really frustrating. And to come here today, and this is really hard for me, because I'm getting really nervous. I just want you to understand how I'm feeling. And then I came up here and said, I really don't have a chance to change this, and I don't even know how to explain it. It's just really hard. And there's no way that anyone who doesn't have these problems could actually fully understand how I feel through this entire school day of like six or seven hours. It's really hard. I don't know what else to say, but that's, yeah.
My name is Amy Johnson. I'm a 336 Merrill Lynch guy. And mostly what I wanted to talk about is what are the metrics that will cause the mask mandate to go away? Like, what are the mandates, metrics for it in, what's the metrics for it out? Because I know at the meeting before the mandate happened, Tom was talking about how there, at the time, there was less cases of COVID in the lower ages where there's masks than the right unmasked phase. But actually, I haven't had to look at this last full week's of school metrics, and it turns out that actually, there is. There was 24 cases in the masked community, and that there's 3,500 kids in that masked area, masked group. There was only 21 cases in the three middle schools and high school, and that's 4,500 kids. And according to the district page, it does mention that the district totals includes all the schools and staff and the board members and the nutrition services and transportation and all that. But the numbers I have, the 3,500 from the masked area and the 4,500, those are just the children. So that's all, so it's only in the masked area, it was a 0.69% of the students that got COVID. And they wore masks. Well, and the people who wear, it was optional, and only like 15% wore a mask, it was 0.47%. So basically, there's more kids who got sick wearing the masks. So why, why are we wearing masks? I mean, seriously, I have handouts you can have. And basically, also, that first week, the first week when, right before the thing, masks got mandated, the average inoculation period for COVID is five to six days after 12.5 days. And as of the day we had the emergency meeting on the third day, there had only, it had only been like five or six days since school started. So most of those kids probably got COVID before they even started school. So that's my point. So, most of those kids probably got COVID before they started school. And B, the populations are almost the same, and the masked community actually had more cases. So why are we wearing these stupid pieces of cloth across our face, and our kids are dizzy and miserable? I mean, I'm miserable in this. So why are we doing it? That's all.
Hi, Megan Rodney, 199 Laurel Oak Drive. As a former Centerville City Schools elementary teacher, I remember a time before Alisterl, a time before you could walk right into school without pushing a button to be buzzed in. At one point, I had the classroom closest to the front office, and parents would just wander in just to say hi. That idea seems completely foreign to us now. We would never dream of casually walking into a classroom without signing in and obtaining a badge at the office first. Over time, we became accustomed to these changes because we entrusted the board with the safety of our most cherished things, our children. These safety measures and other changes over the years implemented by the board demonstrate our commitment to the safety, health, and education of our children. Unfortunately, we have lost sight of this in our current climate. This is because we are being distracted by temporary COVID restrictions, such as masks. The anger around these perceived injustices are meant to play on our emotions and distract us from the fact there is a school district to be run. Human resources and personalities, health insurance and benefits, curriculum, union and contract negotiations, standardized testing, unfunded state and federal mandates, levies, school funding issues, the list goes on and on. There is so much more to running a school district than most people realize. Who do we want sifting through these issues on our behalf? I know who we don't want. We don't want the loudest, most extreme voices to be making decisions for our district. We've seen how that plays out in a neighboring community. We've watched in horror as that community was ripped apart by this same type of anger and vindictiveness, ultimately clogging the children and teachers in that district to suffer. We are not immune to this here. We should appreciate that we have a board that is transparent and honest, as evidenced by our financial rating of the highest opinion possible from the Auditor of State. A board with deep institutional knowledge of this district, its people, and its core values. A board with a solid professional working relationship with the teacher people, a rare gift not to be taken for granted. A board who knows keeping kids in school is of the utmost importance, no matter what it takes. I appreciate that you have reliably put students, teachers, and the health and safety and security of the district at the forefront of all of your decision-making. You have not made decisions through anger, nor personal agenda, nor irrational emotion. You have been consistent and trustworthy and steadfast. You have made logical, rational, and intentional decisions that honor the whole of the district. This excellence in leadership is something we cannot afford to lose in the ever-changing landscape of public education. Thank you.
Last time I spoke here, I had mentioned the fact that I'd been in the military for 27 years and chose to settle in Centerville. And the speaker kind of made light of the fact that, oh, I'm in the military, so I'm just use the following orders, and that's why I do things. Now, 27 years in the military, 48 countries around the world, seeing things get blown up, no, I've learned to make a lot of decisions for myself. Couple other things I learned in the military was some things about leadership and integrity. Leadership is making that tough decision. Leadership is finding something that is not popular, but you think is right, and going forward. Leadership is knowing that some people are not going to like it. Not everybody's going to get it right, but going forward with it. Leadership is, like Mr. Schreier said, I may not agree with everything that Dr. Henderson does, or we may not, but as a board, we hired him and we support him. That's leadership. I thank the board for giving leadership. Don't always agree with everything. Thank you for your leadership. Integrity. I know an athlete who is an elite level at his age. He all of a sudden got asthma so that he didn't have to wear a mask. The other kids on the team learned about that. Every time he made a mistake, they teased him. "Oh, it must be your asthma now." Where is the integrity that he learned? A religious exemption, I think, is a perfect thing if that is who you are and who you live by. The 27 years I did in the military, it's important to defend all those rights and the rights for people to speak. Don't use it just because you don't want to do the mask. Use it because it's who you are, it's always who you've been since you were young. And the other thing on this, there are people in this group here in the past that may have been my friends, or that maybe tomorrow might have been my friends. But unfortunately, we have to have police here this evening. And unfortunately, some of you are on this side, and some of you are on that side. And I unfortunately will have to choose friends, or you will choose me as friends or not friends because of this. Don't take these things so, so violently personal. Disagree, it's mine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Arson. I live at 10355 Virginia Lee Drive. I have three children in Centerville City Schools. I would like to support and consider a holistic approach to this school masking policy. There's a large amount of scientific evidence and questionable masks to meet the goals you've set out with the mandate. Additionally, I would ask you to consider the negative impact that students will be part of wearing masks for extended periods of time. There's a large amount of scientific evidence and questionable ability of masks to meet the goals you've set out with the mandate. Additionally, I ask you to consider the negative impacts of students not being part of a mask for extended periods of time. One piece of evidence of limited effects of masks on schoolchildren is the impact of no mask policies in many European countries. Those companies have not required masks for schoolchildren yet, they have the same per capita COVID transmission rate, so. I would encourage you to look at large amount of scientific evidence studies that show ineffective masks are slowing the spread of respiratory virus infection. One such CDC study recently independently looked at five COVID mitigation measures in schools. This comprehensive study involved ninety thousand students from several boards of school districts. The study found that the only mitigation, only mitigation effects that had some impact on virus transmission rate were improving school ventilation and masking unvaccinated adult staff. The study's findings indicate that distancing, hybrid schedules, classroom barriers, HEPA filters, and mask mandates for students had no statistically significant impact on COVID virus transmission rates. This study by the CDC was the most robust study mask done to date. Dr. Lisa S. Perkins, the Director of Emergency Medicine and Infectious Disease Management at Boston Medical Center, was recently asked about the results of the study. She said, "A year ago, I said masks were not the end of the world, why not just wear a mask?" But the world has changed. There are real downsides to masking children for this long, with no end date, without any clear upside. I am not aware of any studies that show conclusively that kids wearing masks in schools has any effect on their own mobility, morbidity, or mortality, or hospitalization for death rate in the community around them. Finally, I would like to add some perspective on the COVID virus. In two thousand sixteen, twenty thousand three hundred and sixty children died in the United States. The leading cause of death in children were in order, accidents, homicide, suicide, cancer, and heart disease. Automobile accidents account for only one-third of accidental deaths of children. Since the beginning of COVID, four hundred fifty-four children have died from the COVID virus in the United States. That's an average of about two hundred per year. Each year, one hundred children die from the flu epidemic. I mention these statistics to give you a better picture of the risk for our students to COVID. If you really want to protect our children from what may harm them, you would not let them drive a car. If the superintendent insists on mandating masks, I would ask two things you provide to parents. One, what scientific studies have you used to back up the need for masks and post them on the school district website for COVID? Secondly, provide the metrics you will use to determine when masks are no longer required by students. This will show the parents rigor you went through to determine why you're making this decision with us here. I would measure if you use the term risk student card.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Jill Stevens, and I live at twelve thirty Abbott Trail in Washington Township. We are an Air Force family who chose to retire here because we love our schools. Appreciate your board members reading and Dr. Henderson reading our emails and responding to us promptly. I'm here tonight to voice my opinion and against masking our kids without exception or exemption. I'm concerned that the board and even Dr. Henderson do not care about what many parents feel and think about masking their children all day. As election signs begin to pop up in our neighborhoods, I have heard and read some unkind words coming from the supporters of the school board. One quote on August fifth, from a supporter of these incumbents, was about the three conservatives running for school board. And the quote is, "Do I care what their personal values are? Not really. Do I want them to have a voice? Absolutely not." This is concerning to me, and it proves that we must stand up for our values and our children. I'm speaking for the parents against mandates, and mandates are against the Christian faith and American values. According to, um, the National Catholic Biotic Center, mandates by their nature exert pressure that can be severe, which we have seen. There's been this past year mandates over testing, masks, vaccines. It's denied people a warrant of shelter on a twenty-degree day, food, employment, and education, and the right to speak at a board meeting, basic necessities to live from a mandate. Vaccines, vaccines, and masks are not a moral obligation, but voluntary in this country, even with a duty to protect the common good. We must make our own ethical decisions. This virus has been around for twenty years, once. It is no longer new, and we are professionals doing extraordinary work. Hmm. The, um, I have a couple articles as well as the speakers before me, the same ones I noticed. One of them was called "The Science of Masking Kids in Schools Remains Untroubled." That was from August, um, twenty-fourth. And that did determine that the science is not settled. They compared the nations who don't mask to, um, other nations who don't mask their kids in schools to ours, to the United States. And they found no evidence of more outrage than unmasked schools. There's many other articles, and there's much more science. Some are just comparing masked kids to masked kids, and then saying that they work. So the conflicting news is what makes us decide. We are to make a conscious decision due to this conflicting news, to mask or not. I would like to know why our religious and moral conscious exemptions are being denied. Title seven of the United States Civil Rights Act. This gives the right to follow our beliefs.
Ms. Stevens, it's been three minutes.
Okay, but lastly, no conservative I know.
It's been three minutes. We're in the time of COVID.
Being against mandates, it's not experienced. Thank you.
My name is Christine Balsin. I'm at ten fifty-six Cedar Creek Circle. I refuse to co-parent with the government. I refuse to co-parent with the Centerville City Schools. I refuse to let my child go to daycare or Big Pharma. I refuse to mask my children, knowing that it's not safe nor effective in preventing the spread of COVID-19. I refuse to be coerced or bullied into giving my child an experimental COVID injection that has no long, has no long-term safety studies, especially when the risk of COVID in children is low. I refuse to allow my child to be harmed for the sake and profits to the pharmaceutical industries and the illusion of safety of others. This is an illusion. Masks are an illusion. I refuse to sit quietly as our constitutional rights and freedoms, and now thanks to Dr. Henderson, our religious rights are slowly removed from this generation of children. Enough is enough. As a parent, it's my job to protect my children, and I will not comply with these mandates put forth by the Centerville City Schools district. I'm taking a stand against this school district because your policies and procedures, I know, will do more harm to my children than they will good.
May I start?
You can leave now.
Okay. My name is John Thomas Unit, my address is six forty-five E. Social Row Road. For those unaware, the Ohio Revised Code, I am an attorney, I should say that. The Ohio Revised Code says that elected school board members make policy for the districts by voting, including the hiring retention of an unelected superintendent whose job is to implement board policy. The idea is that the superintendent is accountable to the board, and the board members are accountable to the voter. So when COVID-19 started and a masking plan was put in place, it was done by a permanent vote of the board. Like when it was repealed on thirty July twenty twenty-one, a vote of the board, which made it so strange that it was not the board, it was the superintendent who reinstituted a masking plan less than a week later on six August twenty twenty-one. In last week's special board meeting, I told the board members that per their bylaws, they needed to vote to make the masking plan an enforceable policy, to which I was told,
"We know we didn't vote and legal okayed it."
Since then, we all know that the superintendent has expanded the masking plan to all students, and again, with no vote by the school board. So much leadership. But why? And at what consequences? Well, first, there are problems with the plan itself. It does not address how quarantined students with less severe symptoms might keep up with coursework. And second, if you're pro-masking, it doesn't even require the students wear a mask that would actually inhibit contagion. But even worse, not having a board-approved plan is creating a general lack of trust in the district. Parents are being pitted against each other as they feel like the other doesn't care about their own child's needs. And I have seen some parents demand proof that the plan is actually in the policy manual or just the minutes of a board meeting. That puts teachers and administrators in a tenuous position because it isn't to be found in either. So they do not respond to such requests, which can appear like disrespect to parents. And an unvoted plan makes it unclear to parents exactly how far the board will allow the superintendent go to enforce it. It may, as has been, uh, mentioned, be of interest to the board that a dozen or more parents have been told to justify their religious beliefs on masking so the superintendent can judge their authenticity or sincerity, whereupon their rights were summarily denied after being
"denied thoroughly with legal counsel."
One may well wonder how much taxpayer money may be used to defend potential litigation by some of these same taxpayers. And I just remind everyone that the possibly more contentious issue of vaccines has not yet been addressed. So why won't the board vote? The answer is simple. It's an election year, and a masking policy actually voted in by the board may be unpopular enough to unseat board members up to reelection. As long as the unelected superintendent is willing to be less popular.
It's been three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Those board members can tell voters that they didn't vote in the plane.
That is an hour's board policy. I am sorry. What I would ask, those of you in line, do me a favor and send all five of us an email.
Are you gonna read it?
I read every one of them, I'm sure everyone here reads every one of them. Yes, ma'am. Would you please do that this week? And someone will get back to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I may not be very techie, but I know the difference between a red light and a green light. Bear with me, thank you. Item number seven on the agenda is, uh, the board and administrative reports.
Our next meeting, Emily. Yeah, we don't have any Wednesday reports. I believe that they're still in summer recess, so there could be something different.
Okay. Uh, seven B, uh, three board reps, uh, Mrs. Park.
The board reps, you don't have any here, fortunately, they will next month. Thank you.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Item number eight on the agenda are the treasurer's recommendations. Um, these were, uh, these were sent to us last week. Eight A, consider approving the June twenty twenty-one financial statements and then and now purchase orders approved by administration, certified by the treasurer, and supported by board resolution, totally three hundred eighteen thousand three hundred twelve dollars and five cents. Can I have a motion, please?
Remove. Second.
Any discussion, comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Uh, eight B on the agenda, consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings. July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting. August fifth, twenty twenty-one, special meeting. August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, special meeting, work session. Remove.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Um, item number nine on the agenda tonight are the superintendent's recommendations. I know we have, I will take them, I believe, in the order that I believe are true, and if I'm not right on those, somebody harp. Okay. Uh, nine A, uh, the superintendent recommends resignations as listed on schedule A. The superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certificated personnel listed on schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on schedules D and D one for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. And the superintendent recommends the granting of leads of absence for personnel listed on schedule E for the reason and on the dates given. Can I have a motion, please?
Somebody.
Eric. Any special comments on those? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Uh, again, nine A, the superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on schedule D two for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. Can I have a move?
Second.
Any comments, questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Stain.
Mrs. Dernbach.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Uh, nine A, continuing, the superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on schedule D three for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments.
Can I move?
Right.
Discussion, call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks abstaining. Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Uh, continuing on nine A, uh, the superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on schedule D four for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. Remove.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach abstaining. Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Uh, item ten on the agenda, consider approving a Southwest Ohio Educational, I'm sorry, Southwest Ohio Education Purchasing Council Resolution for the purchase of school buses. Whereas the Centerville City School Board of Education wishes to advertise and receive bids for the purchase of one or more school buses, therefore, be it resolved, the Centerville Board of Education wishes to participate and authorize the Southwest Ohio Educational Purchasing Council to advertise and receive bids on said board's behalf as per specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of five school buses. Remove. Second. Uh, any discussion or comments we'll have? Tom, do you want to touch on that, please?
Sure. Um, every year, we ask the board to pass this resolution. Uh, as members with the, um, the EPC, it gives us a lot of buying power. And so all this really does is give us the opportunity to continue to work with the Educational Purchasing Council. And then we always come back to you guys and talk about what we think our needs in regards to how many buses we should purchase. So this is just an annual occurrence, and it's the first step as we look towards, um, improving and adding to our transportation league career.
Thank you. The other item, item ten.
I just wanted to verify that the bids that we receive are good through the end of the fiscal year, is that correct?
We have starts at the beginning of next school year.
Okay. So, oh, so we can.
Any other comments? Uh, Ms. Solomon, call the roll.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Item number eleven, consider approving the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two test security procedures required by the Ohio Revised Code and Administrative Code thirty-three zero one dash thirteen dash zero one. Remove. Eric. Uh, Tom, would you address that again, please?
Yes. Um, again, this is an annual occurrence. As everybody knows, we are mandated to give assessments from the state of Ohio to our children. And, um, this basically are the test security procedures that are outlined, uh, that we must follow and implement in this for those. So again, it's something that we ask board to approve every August. every August as we start the new school year.
Thank you. Any other questions on that's on 11? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Item number 12, consider approving the following resolutions and modifications to the following Board of Education policies. Number 2240, controversial issues. Number 5336, care of students with diabetes. Policy number 6144, investments. Policy number 7440.01, video surveillance and electronic monitoring. Policy number 7455, accounting system for capital assets. Policy number 7540.02, web accessibility, content, apps, and services. Policy number 8500, food services. Policy number 8510, wellness. Can I move?
Second.
Any discussion on any of those board policies? Anyone who discussed that last week and in previous months? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Item number 13, any other final comments? Item number 14, could I have a motion for a German, please?
No move. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Thank you for coming, everyone.